I would like to call to order the June 16th meeting of the Avalon City Council. Roll call please Denise.
Councilmember Cassidy.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Olson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here. If you please stand for the pledge of allegiance to our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I have asked Ole Olson to lead us in our invocation today.
It's time for the invocation, kind of remembers. On Sunday, the packy off of the bike. He was a very critical part of this community. Taught down, went to Toian, taught at Toian, came into town, he was the chairman of the planning commission. He was the president of the Chamber of Commerce, he was president of the Island Company on the board of directors. He will be sorely missed, he's been a really great guy for conservation, for billfish. He was very, very into billfishing and conservation stuff. And he helped out a whole bunch of people, we're gonna miss him a bunch. Keeps family in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, announcements.
I don't believe we have any announcements this evening Mayor.
Okay, written communications.
Number two.
Denise, we're good? Okay, presentation time, Southern California Edison.
Good evening Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, staff, our neighbors, business and family. Ron Garcia, Southern California Edison Company, Public Affairs. Jeff Lawrence is not here tonight, it's pretty obvious I don't look like him. And the reason he's not here is that he got married. And he said of the city council, or marriage, he's on his honeymoon. So, he wanted to be here but his wife said, "You're gonna spend time with me this week." And so he did the right thing. So on behalf of Jeff, Jeff I will be providing the update today. And at the end of the presentation I'll be prepared to ask, answer some questions. I always want to start every meeting with what we do at Edison Company, which is a safety moment. Priority to our customers, our families, our employees is number one. Again, just to remind the listening audience that hanging or dangling down power lines, treat them as if they're energized. If you see somebody in danger, don't try to rescue, don't touch those wires. Call 911. And then after calling that, if you want, you can call Southern California Edison Company by calling 1-800-611-1911. Again, please don't touch or try to rescue. Call the professionals and we'll respond, they will, and so will we as promptly as possible. Okay, turning to the slides, Catalina Island Stage Two Water Rationing Update. Here we go, Middle Ranch Reservoir Level Update. For those who have not been watching this, listening on TV. We moved into Stage Two Rationing when the water levels at Middle Ranch Reservoir, Thompson Dam fell below 300 acre feet. And by the way, an acre feet is 325,851 gallons. The average household uses about a half acre foot of water per year, depending perhaps on where you live, what part of California. Incidentally, the rainfall to date has been about seven inches is what we have. And a very good year 2011, the rainfall was 21.85 inches. So it's very obvious we're in a drought, everybody is well aware of it and everybody is working hard to conserve water. Today, we are in Stage Two with the acre feet at Middle Ranch Reservoir, Thompson Dam at 251 acre feet. Should it fall below 200 acre feet, we will then move to Stage Three. And so that's what we are working and that's what the families and the business community has been doing so well is conserving water on the island so that we don't go to that, to that extent. Slide number three. Okay, earlier today I was asked, "What's going on?" The visitor count has dropped this month. Well, here's a slide that compares water usage with visitor count and May 2015 compared to May 2014. The blue is the total water consumed on the island wide, the 76 square mile island of Catalina with the city of Avalon in it. There was, in May 14, 25.92 acre feet used in May 2014 compared to the small blue graph, 18.2 acre feet used in May 2015. So what a wonderful reduction. That's 7.9 acre foot reduction, or it converts to 30.48 reduction from what was used last year. The red number, the red number is the number of visitors we've had in the month of May, 82,204. And that was in May 2014. Catalina visitors this month, May, 79,468 visitors. So you're right, the visitor count has dropped and, and this is a decrease of 2.7 visitors or 3.3 reduction in visitors. Slide number four is comparing again, visitors and baseline. So water usage Stage Two compared to 2012, 2013. So August through May of 2015, water usage with visitors count. So Stage Two Rationing is working to preserve our California water resources and prolong the need for us to implement further stages of rationing. Thank you community and families for working so hard to conserve your water. August 2012 through May 2013, 293.49 acre feet was used. And so you can see that number at the top of the tall blue graph there. August 2014 to May 2015, 194.12 acre feet was used. So that's, that's a drop of 33.86 percent reduction in usage of water. The community's efforts have saved 99 acre feet of water compared to 2012, 2013. And of course, these conservation efforts are equivalent to approximately four months of supply of water. So commendable, commendable. Visitor count, August 12th, May 2013, 638,265 visitors. They had such a great time, they told their families and friends. And in the period of August 2015 to May 2015, 726,840 people came to be guests of the happiest place over here on this ocean. An increase of 88,575, all enjoying the amenities that Avalon and the Catalina Island provide. An increase of 13.88 percent visitors. So while the visitor count is up, water usage is down and Avalon can serve as the role model for the rest of the state and in fact, for the rest of the nation, in fact, worldwide, the people are doing an absolutely amazing job, thank you. Slide number five is a graph showing number of violations. So since we last spoke, as of June 16th, 2015, there has been 101 violations. Seven violations this month to date. And you can see there for, for plumbing leaks, water runoff, surface washing, watering hours, construction use, pool and spa fountains, and time of watering. So again, please pay attention to the time of when you can water and also be very careful to correct and repair any leaks because that really does hurt the use of the water here on the island. Slide number six. Slide number six, oh, I go back, I didn't show that slide. So there's the slide I was talking about, the graphs, and seven new violations this month. Okay, slide number six. Okay, water allocation violations, flow restrictors issued by month. And so there you see the billing statement at the bottom, the first bar there. And then it shows that in May, we billed 1,773 customers. And of those 1,773 customers billed, 35 had problems with using too much water. Flow restrictors were installed. So that's 2.1 percent of those being billed that month of May, using too much water and getting a flow restrictor. To date, flow restrictor violations are 210, residential 170, and commercial 40 customers. So then, last Stage Three Forecast, slide number seven. So the red line shows what would have happened had we not gone into Stage Two and the families and businesses cooperating on the island. Somewhere around August, we would have gone to Stage Three, 50 percent reduction. But because of the great work being done in conservation, we're projecting that that won't happen until somewhere near the end of September. Actually, we're saying September 24th of 2015. Summer, summer starts on 21st of June, Father's Day by the way, and ends September 22nd. So at the present rate, water is now being used, September is the time when we expect that we might go under 200 acre feet at Middle Ranch Reservoir, Thompson Dam. So anyway, we're working very hard to prevent that from happening, the families are conserving, so are the businesses. Everybody realizes when they come to the island, there's a, there's a lot of reminders, please use the water wisely. So anyway, doing a good job. And we're working on other steps to prevent us from going to Stage Two that we, I mean Stage Three that we won't talk about tonight. But we'll do that next council meeting. Okay. So anyway, there we have our last slide. If you have questions about your water service, your gas, electric, there's a number to call for the Edison Company. Water conservation tips by going to our websites. And then lastly, just a reminder that there are some people who want to take advantage of us. They have some very clever scams. One gentleman I watched on television yesterday, who let them into his home while they walked off with his World War II memorabilia. And it was just really tragic. So if someone comes to your home and says, "I'm with the Edison Company," they're not wearing a badge like this. I mean, they won't have my picture of course, but a badge similar to this. Or driving one of our trucks, please question them. Don't let them in, call us, the numbers are there, and we'll address those issues. So with that, just a last update about Holland's Landing Well, number three. It's pumping water, and the water looks real good. Right now, we're flushing the system, so maybe mid-July, we'll be able to deliver that water. We have permission to deliver the water, we just want it to be pristine, clean, no, no discoloration smell or taste. So maybe mid-July, that will have resolved itself. With that, that completes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you, that was very thorough. Are there any questions of Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, I'd like to ask you, is that water drinkable down at Holland's? Are they gonna advertise that water's drinkable?
Right now, it's not because we're flushing the system. But as soon as we finish flushing the pipes, drawing down the old water in the tanks that are out there and filling it with the new water, it will be drinkable. We have permits to serve it right now.
How's the million gallon tank going?
I, I don't know what the status of the million gallon tank is, I'll give you a report. But we finished putting in the new pipes that are going down the hill from the million gallon tank to USC. All brand new pipes, and we're removing the old and making repairs on that tank. So not quite sure how long it is before we can complete that project.
Okay, well, they're putting the pipes in, that means they must, they must be going ahead with progress. And it might look good for the people at the USMS then, pretty soon.
Yes, progressing as planned.
And all the repairs as well, for that matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, city manager's report.
I think the only item I have Mayor is that I'm going to need to leave tonight's meeting a bit early. And so when I do, Denise will take over for me.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Just in response to some letters we have received regarding the conflict of interest issue, just wanted to be clear on the record that with respect to the Island Company, the conflicts that Councilmember Hernandez has is that he receives income, some income, working for the Island Company. And Councilmember Cassidy receives income through her relationship with her husband, who does business with the Island Company. And they receive reimbursement for services and supplies. And that qualifies under the Conflict of Interest Code. We usually identify these, every item that the Island Company has when they have to recuse themselves, but just wanted to do it again.
Thank you. Councilmember report.
I was gonna ask the city manager if he had any kind of an update on the consortium meeting. Is that, would be, that be considered a city manager report?
I could give you a brief update, and I did prepare a brief summary document which I, maybe I did. I think I did. Oh boy, did I do that?
You know, we have one, I just wanted the public to be kept up on that.
So, it was a-
They're footing the bill for it.
Sure, it was a meeting this past Tuesday at Edison Headquarters in Rosemead. The mayor, Mayor Protem and myself represented the city. Along with the city, there was also representatives from the Conservancy, the Island Company, USC, the camps, chamber. And I believe that balanced out the group. A number of important topics covered. Most importantly, Edison's efforts to procure an additional D cell unit. It's kind of like the worst kept secret in town at this point. But we've been working with Edison basically for the last month or so on this project. In fact, the city attorney's office just today, I believe, finalized the proposed covenant with Edison for that unit. The city, as you know from my speaking to each of you individually, I'm gonna make recommendation that we contribute $500,000 from city reserves towards that effort. So that will be coming to you at the next council meeting. We do anticipate that that money will be able to be backfilled by Prop One Water Bond money, so that's good news. That will take some time, but anyway, so that was one update. Basically, the unit that they've purchased is one that was designed for use in the Indian Ocean. So it's equipped to handle very salient conditions. If I remember the output, it was around 150,000 to 200,000 gallons a day. So essentially, would successfully stave off Phase Three. We're working on issues related to the D cell plant, notably the intake and the outfall. So there are some moving parts still, but that is well moving forward. And we do believe that we're going to be able to thwart that 50 percent reduction, working with Edison and the entire stakeholders as a group. So that's very, very good news. They also discussed with the Island Company, the deep water well effort that the Island Company is embarking upon. And that will go before the Planning Commission sometime this summer as an application. So more information on that when that is submitted. And I think-
It's in Avalon Canyon, correct?
Yeah, it's around the location of Joe Machado Field where they're proposing to do that. There's a number of permitting requirements as part of that, and we're working with them on that. I'm just trying to remember if there's any additional updates from that meeting. Mayor Protem and Mayor, do you remember anything else that we talked about that was- Okay, I'll shut up.
I just have a quick question for you Ben. On the, the potential proposal coming to us, since we're in budgetary discussions as well, the $500,000 that the city would contribute from their reserves, what do you feel is a percentage that we will be able to recover that percentage chance that we're gonna recover that from Prop One funds?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent. So it's really not coming from the city's reserves?
Well, it is because it will take some time before the state releases those monies. So it could be, it could be up to a year, two years, it could be a prolonged period of time. But ultimately, we will prevail, I'm very confident. We've got a number of folks working on that. Our city attorney's office also has on its staff Joseph Byrne, who is the State Water Commissioner. So he is very knowledgeable. In fact, he is among the people that is in charge of dispersing the monies. Not to say that he would do anything inappropriate, but he does know the rules and the regs that are involved with that. And he has said, "This is the type of project that the state would really smile upon." It's shovel ready, so to speak. We've, in fact, we've already taken Edison's project description and pushed it out to a number of groups and representatives to show them this is what we're planning on doing. So I feel very confident, I feel confident to the degree that we initially were going to be coming to you with a budget forecast with a revenue shortfall because we thought we were gonna be moving into Phase Three Water Rationing. But I feel confident enough that this unit's gonna move forward, that we're not gonna have to do that, and that we're going to be backfilled entirely. I feel very confident.
And we've already had conversations with the state and the people that give the money about the fact that the application for this money won't even be completed when the project is to come online. And so we've already working with them with protocols in terms of what they need for us to get paid retroactively, the kind of accounting systems, cost methodologies, the kind of proof. And we're already implementing that so that when the application comes in, we're first in line and we can get that money. So.
That's good, is there any other questions? Okay. That was city attorney, right? No.
No, that's Captain Sampson.
Okay, yeah, so, so I was seeing that they also discussed tariffs and also-
Oh, okay, so Councilmember Sampson, thank you. So one, one additional thing that was discussed was, that's an important point you bring up. Timing's gonna be important with bringing this new unit on, obviously. We're working with Edison closely to do so, so that hopefully around the September timeframe, it will come on board. But in the event that it doesn't, because there's a lot of things we have to make sure are in place. Edison did discuss working with the CPUC on relief from the tariffs, such that if the reservoir drops below and into the Stage Three area, we could be temporarily forgiven, if you will, because, you know, we're bringing this other unit online that has the output in order to get us where we need to be. If that makes sense.
Yeah, that, yeah, that makes sense. If, yeah, we could just buy some time with the grace of the Public Utilities Commission, that would be great if we could-
Right, so they're gonna, they've got their regulatory folks working on that end on a parallel path because they know that, you know, there's a lot of things we have to do to make sure that that comes over in the September timeframe.
Okay, and then there was also, they discussed Corex purchasing the water and gas utility as well. Did they go into detail on that at all?
Not much detail on that. Essentially, it's kind of the same update we've heard previously, that they're still working with them, that the Corex still anticipates wanting to purchase the utilities and that they will file for an 851 filing, which is a divestiture of assets with the CPUC. But they haven't done so. And when they finally do that, it's probably an 18-month, 24-month process. So still a long ways down the road.
Okay, that's a good update. Now, thank you for that.
Sure.
Anything else, Councilman?
No, thank you.
I attended the Gateway City's Transportation and Council Meeting. I believe it was the 7th of June, day after our last council meeting. Really great information that came from it. I gave my packet to Jordan Monroe, who's looking into some of those items, sorry. And regarding vehicles and possibilities for the city and whatnot. So also a new transportation map that came out. So that was very interesting. Next week, I'll be attending the League of California Cities Training in Monterey. Not really sure what I'm expecting yet, but I will do a report out on that. And I've received a number of written and oral communications regarding bonds, the hospital board, budget, street performers, and water related.
Thank you Mayor. I got to go to beautiful Sacramento last Thursday and Friday. Was 102 on Friday. Went to the League of California Cities Revan Tax Committee meeting, which we talked about. Sales tax revisions to, there's a bunch of things that aren't covered by sales tax. And so to be more inclusive, there's a move afoot to include services and such under the sales tax. And the idea is, at least in the first year, is to lower the tax rate across the board because you're gonna have all these additional things that'll be taxed. So it'll be a revenue neutral in the first year. One of the challenges is the Amazons of the world and all the services that we're buying now as opposed to, you know, goods and stuff. In community services, they're talking about e-cigarettes, which we have on our agenda this evening, trying to make sure that e-cigarettes and vapors are treated just like regular cigarette products. They're not used to hook kids, which I think is a good thing. And I'm glad that we have the, Adam on the agenda. I have a lot of paper for you, sir, you can read on the boat this evening going back.
Fantastic.
And I also had a opportunity to stop by State Lands on Friday morning for about 20 minutes. There are some staffers that were here, or that are still there. When I worked for the Island Company, we had the relationships with them about the mowing leases and the pure lease that we had. And I just wanted to just clarify that, because they got some confusing documents from us. I explained how they got what they got, and they understood, and they thanked us for the trip. And they might come down and visit us this summer, because they haven't been here in a few years.
So that's it.
I'm also going to beautiful Monterey with them. I'll keep Ms. Cassidy out of trouble.
I would like to comment, a little notice we got from the Friends of the Library, that Don Canaby, our supervisor, is increasing, that his staff will be increasing the wifi capability at the library. And once you have the password from the librarian, you should be able to access the wifi anytime. Friends of the Library purchased tables and benches, which I hopefully you saw out there. And Allison Osinski and, and everybody was out there putting them together, and it looks great. And Captain Federal was also a big help. So we want the public to use and enjoy them. And once the exterior is completed by the county library and the Island Company, the current benches and tables will be moved to another location where they may be needed. And when getting your wifi password at the library, please say thank you to Celia, who is helping each life, temporary librarian until a final candidate is selected. And thank you very much. Like to remind folks that, and I don't remember the date, so you can help remind me, that PUC will be coming on-
22nd or 21st? 21st, I always screw that up, sorry.
Okay, July 21st. And if it's not already on our webpage, it will be on there. We are still soliciting questions from the community that they may want to ask. So, and I know Cindy is, is working with people too, so if you could please get those in. We would like to be able to get those questions to them, and we're just a month away. So please get those in as soon as possible. On Sunday, I attended the SCIF celebration at the high school gym, and that's the program with Linda Rifkin. They had 11 graduates come back from four years of college, from colleges all throughout the United States. They have 22 new high school grads that will be attending all these colleges, from Illinois, Iowa, UC Berkeley. Anyway, the program is phenomenal, it's just a very touching program. These are students that, that aren't at the top of the GPA list. And they work with them to get them able to take their SATs. And they take them over and over and over again until they learn how to get good scores on, as they teach them how to write resumes. It's phenomenal. So, and they give them a huge care package with a new laptop and winter clothes for winter and all the stuff they're gonna need for their dorm. It's, it was a wonderful celebration, and I was very happy to be there. And I, and then I just had a question. Were we going to, we discussed at the last council meeting about having a debrief for whatever. And I thought we all kind of agreed on that, but I don't know, is that what we're still wanting to see? A debrief? Maybe we can do something in conjunction with, with the chambers, well?
We can, we've just, we figured we had a lot of meetings scheduled for you guys of late, so we weren't sure if you-
Well, it doesn't even need to be run like a council meeting. I think it just needs to be run as a come and sit and share and chat.
Perhaps what I could do Mayor is a suggestion, there's a chamber board meeting on Thursday, and I can talk with Jim and the chamber board about that.
And maybe we just have them spearhead it, so we don't have to worry about being a brown act thing or something. I don't know. I just think feedback from people is kind of nice.
If you're all there and I-
We have to know this anyway. Not like we're gonna be, okay. That's all.
Just want to touch up on the meeting in July 21st. Just so there's no misunderstanding where the meeting's gonna be. It will be here in the council chamber, and it will be televised, and we will set up for additional-
Yes, we've always-
Right, that's, that's-
Yeah, we've always discussed from, from the onset that that's where we were gonna hold it. We're gonna have an arrangement where, because it's gonna be Edison, the city, and the CPUC. So there, we'll have some type of configuration here where everybody's got a table and a microphone. And of course, the public is invited, so yes.
So it will be here in the chamber?
Yes.
Okay.
So because Ben is going to be leaving shortly, we are going to take the closed session at the front of the meeting. So y'all can get a little break.
Yeah, this is conference with labor negotiators. The negotiators are the city council and the city manager. And the unrepresented employee is the chief financial officer.
No action was taken.
Well, here we are on, and we are returning from closed session. And city attorney?
No reportable action.
You could've said-
We waited for this?
No reportable action, okay. But there was progress, okay. Oral communication, this is a time where members of the community, you speak for up to three minutes. And no action will be taken on a non-aggrandized item.
Good evening. David Hart, Recreation Coordinator. This weekend, Avalon will host the California Eight Man Football All-Star- Um, this weekend, Avalon will host the California Eight-Man Football All-Star Game at Joe Machado this Saturday at five PM. There will be five players who will represent Avalon High School along, um, with several other CIF schools. Um, Avalon coaches Earl Schrader, Mike Rosella, and Ruben Segura will be coaching one of the two teams. Um, it's free to ten, and they would love to have your support there. Starting, uh, Monday, June twenty-ninth, um, swim lessons will be starting. The rate for that will be fifty-seven dollars per session, which is two weeks of ten classes. Now, for more information on that, you can contact City Hall's Recreation Department. Some of you might have noticed work being done at People's Park. We are getting ready to lay down the memorial bricks from one of our earlier campaigns. We appreciate the patience from those who ordered the bricks a while ago, and the patience from the communities as we move forward with this project. If you would like to memorialize a loved one, a moment in time, or simply honor someone, you still can order a memorial brick from thatsmybrick.com/avaloncalifornia. That's thatsmybrick.com/avalonca. You can also contact us here, um, the city's Recreation Department for more information. Also, Avalon Superior Courthouse is going through a slight interior remodel, but will be reopened, um, this Friday for court on the nineteenth. Um, now, I would like to introduce you to our Fourth of July liaison, Danica Hoffman-Creswell, to give us all an update on the unified festivities for Fourth of July.
Thank you, that was very nice.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, so the Fourth is coming up soon, and we have lots of new and exciting activities that are gonna be happening. The theme is celebrating American music this year, so come dress yourself, dress your cart, or play the part. Some soul, blues, rock and roll folk, come celebrate American music for Catalina Island's two thousand fifteen Fourth of July. Starting off with the morning of the Fourth, at ten AM, we'll do the judging for the vehicles on Lower Descanso Street. At twelve PM, we'll do the parade lineup at the casino, and then one o'clock, the parade will start. And once again, the USC band will be joining us. Following the parade at four PM, the annual boat parade, starting at the Yacht Club. And then, to end the night, at six fifteen, the doors will open to the public for the annual casino ballroom dinner and show. It's sixty-five dollars per person, and you can find that online at tix.com, T-I-X dot com. You'll have a dinner, USC band performance, and a spectacular view of the fireworks show at nine PM. And this year's fireworks show will be held on a barge at the mouth of the harbor, making it much safer. Plus, the visibility is unbelievable, past the mole and all the way down to White's Landing. For the Fifth of July, at three PM, the USC band will be performing on the Wrigley Stage. At five PM, we're having a new and fun community barbecue, and that's gonna be held at Joe Machado Field. Well, there, we'll be having games and activities, food and drink, and as a bonus, a few of the Avalon High School Advanced Band students will be performing with the USC band. And not last, but last, you'll see that I'm wearing a official Catalina Island two thousand fifteen Fourth of July T-shirt, and that you can purchase for sixteen dollars at three different locations. The Chamber of Commerce on the pier, here at City Hall, or at the bank, uh, with the Art Association. And one hundred percent of those proceeds will go to the USC band events and the new and improved fireworks show. And just a moment. That being said, I have selected your T-shirts for you.
That's so awesome.
You're welcome. I would like to pass the lady. And you can find online through the...
Very good, thank you. Is that medium?
Small for you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, you can purchase those at any of those three locations, like I said. You can also make donations on the website, at, um, the city's website, or also on the chamber, too. There's just a quick little button right there on the front page, and you can make donations, buy your T-shirts, and read all about what's going to happen for the Fourth of July.
That was very good.
May the Fourth be with you.
Do you know if there's gonna be a concert at the casino outside, like there has been the last couple of years?
There will not be.
There won't be, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Sounds like a lot of fun, though.
And you, instead, we're also, you're also gonna be putting like a kiosk up downtown and selling shirts downtown.
That is correct. So, starting, um, this week, and then all the way up until that week. So, the week of the Fourth will be every single day. There will be a kiosk outside of the Wrigley Stage.
Great, thank you.
Lot of progress.
Nice.
Great job.
That was great.
Okay, other oral communications.
Good evening, Council, this is Mayor. Today, I filed a complaint with the FPPC, alerting them to tarnish votes taken by some of our city council to support an ongoing monopoly for freight services to Catalina Island. I was compelled to ask the FPPC to intervene in this matter, so that the outcome of the pending CPUC decisions are not proper, improperly influenced by votes made by council members who should have been disqualified due to their publicly disclosed financial interests in the Island Company. Throughout this process, City Attorney Scott Campbell has asserted that council members Cassidy and Hernandez, who admit to receiving income from the Island Company, were not disqualified from voting on a letter to support Avalon Freight Services' application before the CPUC. The City Attorney's position has been that because the Island Company is not directly involved in the PUC application, council members Cassidy and Hernandez do not have a conflict. This is just plain wrong. The Island Company will not be able to finalize its lease with AFS unless AFS's application before the CPUC is approved. This is undoubtedly why the Island Company submitted testimony to the CPUC in support of AFS's application. Yesterday, direct testimony got submitted to the PUC for all parties. You guys have party status. The direct testimony, Chris Welheim's direct testimony, question number five. Does Psycho have an interest in this matter, and if so, why? Yes. Mr. Welheim goes on to state, if State Lands grants Psycho the authority it seeks, AFS's, AFS will be sub, Psycho's sublease for the ramp and Psycho's leasing for exclusive use of the yard. However, as it is pending application indicates, AFS must also obtain authority from this commission to act as a vessel common carrier before it can provide freight service to the island. Thus, Psycho necessarily has an interest in the outcome of AFS's pending application. These are not my words. This is direct statements made from direct testimony in writing sworn to the PUC from Chris Welheim on the topic. Over the last several months, the City Attorney has been fond of saying conflict of interest rules are complex. When called upon to explain why council members Cassidy and Hernandez do not, in his opinion, have a disqualifying interest by virtue of their economic ties to the Island Company. I agree, conflict of interest rules are complex. But what mystifies me, and what has been mine and this community's unanswered question for months, has been how the City Attorney reaches the conclusion that the Island Company is not directly involved in the CPUC decision when the Island Company clearly stands to significantly gain or lose as a result of the CPUC's decision. Mr. Campbell and the council members in question have never given an answer or an explanation to this question. And in light of the Island Company's testimony to the CPUC, I think they owe it to this community to answer this now. Does your opinion change knowing that the Island Company has submitted sworn testimony stating it has an interest in the outcome of AFS's pending CPUC application? This council still has the chance to do the right thing. You have a, you have time to send a third letter to the PUC withdrawing the previous letters of support on the grounds that the first two letters did not reflect the will of the council. Had council members Cassidy and Hernandez disqualified themselves from those votes, as we believe that they were required to do, and as we have asked the FPPC to investigate, no letters of support for a monopoly would have ever been sent from the city of Avalon. Thank you.
Did you want to give a copy of that to Denise? Any other communications?
Good evening, Pam Albers, two-one-seven, Colli del Sol. Somewhat on the same topic, but a little more personal to me. There was a statement made at the last city council meeting to the effect that I had represented in legal matters for the last three years, Councilman McGugan-Cassidy. I went back and read and listened to it several times, and you said that I'd represented you for the last three years, which can, is definitely not true, because I am no longer a member of the California Bar. I don't practice law anymore. I'm inactive, have been since two thousand thirteen. So, I just wanted to clearly state for the record that the matter that I represented you on dates back to two thousand and eight. There was a hearing two thousand and nine, and then I simply received checks on your behalf and sent them to you, um, through two thousand and eleven. That was the sum total of our legal relationship and my representation.
I've submitted all of those, the exact wording, to the city clerk. That's available for you to review by actually what I read.
The letter?
So, it may have been, you might, may have misheard it, but I, the letter that I read, I have submitted to...
Because it sounds like you said for the last three years. So, I guess what you were saying is that I had represented you for three years, which again, is kind of not true, because there was one hearing, and then I received checks on your behalf and sent them to you. So, it was not an ongoing relationship, a legal relationship, had nothing to do with any of your businesses, any other part of your life.
Certainly, the piece for the last several years was a friendship, which was also mentioned at that same line, so...
So, in that regard, I do...
So, we had served several years together as board members of the women's forum. I think I mentioned, may have mentioned.
So, I, I was obviously a little taken back by that. But then, I think I was even more taken back by the fact that, despite the fact that we were now being told that you do have a conflict and you're not gonna participate in the barge matters, you proceeded to read an extensive letter chastising me, chastising Mr. Curtin, going on at length about it. And I just am gonna say for the record again, what I had come here to ask about was why, between having a discussion with me and the City Attorney about the difference between being on the service list and being a party, and you were adamant that you wanted to be a party, that the city should be a party, and I remember the exact conversation had to do with, because I brought up the same example, the shoreboat franchise that the city manager, we combed through testimony, we questioned witnesses, we submitted our own witnesses, and you were adamant that that was what you wanted to do. And then, suddenly, two weeks later, you're saying, no, that's not what my intent was. And so, I was baffled by that, as were other people, and I got up and I asked a simple question. Have you or your husband had any conversations with the Island Company, who is the landlord and lessor, or someone acting on their behalf at any time about operating Publey Beach Building Supply? And I don't believe that that question was ever clearly answered, and I'm asking it again.
No.
Okay. Never in the past or currently?
My husband may have, in the last forty years, had some conversations, but no.
Okay.
I mean, I can't speak for his family or before that, but no.
Okay.
And I have answered that.
All right, very good. That was the question.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing there's nobody else coming up, we'll go to the consent calendar.
We have three items on the consent calendar this evening. We have actions of May twenty-second and the June second council meeting, and I want to reflect that the June second actions will be amended because Ollie needed to abstain also from, um, the May...
But I was also here at that meeting, too.
Which meeting? May twenty-second?
June second.
No, I know you were there.
But it says I was absent.
Sorry, I'll change that, too. Thank you. Thank you, Ollie.
We can approve them with the amendments?
Yes.
Okay.
And that Ollie would be, also be abstaining from the May twenty-second.
Okay.
And we have expenditures. We have warrants in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. We have four electric fund transfer in the amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. We have two payrolls in the amount of four hundred thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and thirteen cents, for a total expenditure amount of one million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Item three is the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen fiscal policies, which, um, we had discussed at the June second budget study session, and we're asking council to approve all three.
And what is the desire of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
One, two, and three?
Uh, excuse me, one, two, and three.
Second.
Moved in second, public comment? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Item number four.
Item four is a public hearing. I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, before we go into the public hearing, we were wondering if we could pull, go forward on item number eight. And that's Audra McDonald's number, is that, is, council, are we okay with that? Okay, so let's move forward on item number eight. Would you like to step up? And Denise?
Item eight is to consider the appointment of voting delegate and alternate to the Gateway Region Integrated Regional Water Management Authority Governing Board. Council approved that we join this board at the June second city council meeting, and the membership will fulfill the state of California's requirement for integrated regional watershed activities in order to be eligible to pursue state and federal grant funding for water-related projects. And we are recommending that you appoint Jordan Monroe as the member, voting member, and Audra McDonald as the alternate.
Any discussion on that?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second, comment? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay. Now, we're going to go to item number four, which is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing, our second required public hearing on the saltwater and sewer fees for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Uh, we will need a four-fifths, uh, vote for this one to approve. We introduced, we had a public hearing at the last meeting, and we introduced and waived all further readings of the ordinance that would establish rates for, uh, the saltwater service fees and the sewer service fees. Uh, the saltwater is being, uh, oh, should I have, my percentage is in front of me.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five percent and fifteen percent correct for the sewer.
Would the public like to come forward and comment?
Did you open?
Okay, we'll close the public comments section of the hearing, and council?
Um, you just want a motion?
Is there a motion?
Sure.
Move the two eighteen fee schedule as attached.
Actually, it would be a move to adopt an ordinance of the city of Avalon, establishing rates for saltwater service fees and sewer service fees.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Other comments, council? Not call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay, and now, we're gonna...
And the second part of this, Mayor, would be to open additional public hearing to hear and consider all evidence, testimony, and objections or protests by all interested parties, property owners, voters, and taxpayers to the written reports of the annual city of Avalon property-related fees, and consider adopting those reports, directing the city clerk to file the reports with a Los Angeles County auditor, and to request the auditor to place those on the property tax rolls.
Would the public like to speak? Then we shall close that. And is there a motion?
So moved. Do I need to repeat Denise's request?
Adopt?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
One, two, and three on there, yes.
One, two, and three, yeah, move to approve.
Okay.
Adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call for the vote? Are we coming, I'm sorry, are we coming through a lot more clear on these microphones these days, or is it just my voice? It's some improvement in the system that this is happening, huh? Okay, all right. All right, um, item number five.
Number five is the adoption of the... Number five is the adoption of the proposed fiscal year 15-16 miscellaneous fee schedule. We had the first fee hearing at the June 3rd special meeting. Chris Woidzik is here if we have any questions on it. You do have a summary of all the fees that are being raised over, mainly over the board, they're being raised 2.5%. And staff recommends that you adopt the resolution setting fees for services, facilities, and activities for the city of Avalon for fiscal year 15-16.
So we'd like to open this up for public comment? Moving then, we will close the public comment section. And is there a motion? I'll make a motion to, to adopt the resolution setting the fees for services, et cetera, et cetera.
Second.
Been moved in second? No further comment? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Item number six.
When they become effective?
July 1st.
Sorry, I should have said that. Item six is consideration of an ordinance of the city council, the city of Avalon amending portions of the Avalon Municipal Code, Section 9-8.1201, story polls. This was held over from the last city council meeting, and Amanda, Amanda's here for any questions, and she'll lead us through it.
You voted a little faster than I thought you would. So, this is an ordinance that we, we've had language in our code section, in the code for a while, about requirements for story polls. After recent experiences regarding story polls, we recommended some changes to that ordinance, and so what we've done is further define the requirements for putting up story polls, how they should be up, when they should be up. So we're asking that you adopt the ordinance, so that other people going forward have a little clearer idea of what our expectations are when they're required to put up story polls. Primarily, I'll run over them really quickly for the public. It basically is that all story polls must be installed 15 days prior to the date. The story poll plan will be reviewed by the planning staff. Placement of story polls that are sufficient to show the mass, bulk, height, and scale of the structures measured from a permanent benchmark on or near the proposed project. Major building corners, finished floor levels, significant elements, length of facade with a specific view shed, ridge lines, and a scale should be shown. Outline of the building footprint with stakes and construction netting or other visible project elements. Proposed changes in grade with finished height and elevations. And the proposed materials should be something that will hold up to the weather, which is P V Z piping, cable, ropes, and flagging. For more complex projects, they should actually provide us with a plan and a legend, so that when people walk up to the site, they know what's going on. So, this is a first reading of this ordinance, I believe, and then we'll be coming back to you for a second reading. So if you have any questions?
I just had one, and just to clarify, this isn't, this is only when the planning commission requests. This isn't for every project.
The way the code reads is if they're asking for a height variance, they're required to do story polls.
Right, yeah.
Or if the project is of significant impact, that the commission says, "We want you to put up story polls," so that the neighbors and the neighborhood can visualize the project.
Why did, oh, go ahead, councilman.
You said complex, for more complex jobs?
Well, I think, if, for example, if you have a single-family residence, and they don't need a height variance, then that's probably not a large enough project that you would want to put the burden of story polls on the developer. Projects of the size and mass of the museum, the Vons, even if they didn't need a height variance, it's a large enough project that you want people to be able to visualize the size of the building.
Okay. Would that have, would, would the place that it's being built have anything to do with the size of it? If it's a, if it's a bigger home, if it's up on the side of a hill, and there's a lot of neighbors around, that would, that would constitute something being complex as well?
Certainly, the planning commission could make that decision, and I believe the public has the right to come in and ask the planning commission to, to say, "We, as the neighborhood, we want to see story polls," and that's what we did with Vons.
Right, and in fact, there was another application that did not require a height variance. It may have been, I forget which one, I think it was the, the, the thing where we had a public hearing, and people said, "Even though you don't require a height variance, it's kind of a big new building, we'd like to see story polls." And so, the, the planning commission decided to put story polls up, so we delayed that project another month, so that the story polls can be put up. So it's not just a height variance, it's whenever there's an unusual project, big project, that you'd really want to see how, how big and, how big it is going to be.
Okay, out of the ordinary.
Correct.
Could offend some people, or, you know, has the potential to maybe cause some, some discussion, so, okay, that's well written.
So this came before us before, and why did we send it back? What were we, what was the tweaking that we were doing then?
The first time it came, and we adopted a story poll ordinance, I believe, but after, like I said, recent experiences, we realized we weren't giving people enough direction and information as to what our expectations were when they put story polls up. We wanted to make sure they hit the A, B, and C points, so that if they go through the exercise of story polls, they're accomplishing what we want to accomplish for the public.
I guess my own, the only concern I have with this, and I don't know if I chatted with you before, is the concept of netting, because I know in some cities, they require that there be netting at the highest elevation that comes down eight feet, whatever the standard netting is, so you can really see the impact, more than still looking at the stars or looking at the trees. If there's more of a barrier to see the impact, it might even be more substantial, but I don't, I don't know what the council thinks. It's just that, they, they do that in other cities, where at least the height, the top elevation is, is screened in some way, usually with that orange kind of stuff.
If, if I could, what this provides is that netting is one option for this, and it is in paragraph-
Oh, good, okay, I'm sorry, I missed it.
C-3, outline the building footprint with stakes and construction netting or other visible project elements, and there has to be a plan submitted-
Oh, okay, thank you.
-to the planning department to approve it, and so, in part of looking at that, the planning department could determine that there should be netting for a specific project.
Thank you, I guess we did add it, and I missed it, I, thank you. Okay. Alrighty, so, is there a recommendation?
Moved, introduce, and waive all readings of an ordinance of the city council, the city of Avalon, amending portions of the Avalon Municipal Code, Section 9-8.1201, story polls.
Before we ask for a second, is, any comment from the community? Okay? Is there a second?
I second that.
Got moved in seconded? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay, we're getting into the exciting stuff. Item seven.
Item seven this evening is the fiscal year 2013-14 audit financial reports for the city of Avalon and LA County MTA. Chris Woidzik is in here that can walk you through this. If you have any questions on all the materials that he presented to you.
Good evening, Chris Woidzik interim chief financial officer. We're very happy to say that we're caught up. We've completed the audit for fiscal year 13-14, for the city audit, as well as the audit for the Metropolitan Transportation Agency funds, and we've presented them to council, and we're here to have you approve them this evening, and that will actually complete the process. So, if you have any questions on that, I can certainly look to address them for you.
One side question, where, maybe it doesn't actually pertain to this, I might be, I might be off a little bit. Where are we at with getting departmental, getting our departments' financials on a monthly basis?
Very close to that. In fact, just this week, I sent out department reports representing 11 months of the current fiscal year, so they actually received their reports earlier this week. I haven't sent the city council your report, in fact, I'll do that, I'll send that to you tomorrow, so you can see where you stand in comparison to your budget. But we would be getting onto a regular schedule now of doing that quarterly, certainly to the council, monthly to the department heads.
Okay, and this was the, the final? We received, obviously, lots of preliminaries, but this is the final and the findings?
This is the final, correct audit reports, yes.
So I can now file this all?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, right here.
With that, then, I figured you'd want to entertain a motion, so I will entertain a motion to receive and approve the fiscal year 2013-14 audited financial statements and accompanying reports.
And is there any public comment? Okay.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and I would just like to say, I, I just kind of cut to the deficiency pages and where they find little things, you know, and, and Chris is very good at responding to those and them accepting his response, so thank you for-
That's a great job.
Another great job.
And moving forward with, with those improvements. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been moved in seconded, call for the vote. Oh, yes, go ahead, Chris.
I was just going to add that the finance department staff very pleased with, that they helped out in this effort, as well as all the department heads and everyone at the city, so we all participated in this, we all wanted to get caught up, and, and everyone's pleased that we finally are. So, and, and your help as well, thank you.
Very ecstatic. Thank you so much, and your department and everybody. Okay.
Oops. Okay, all ayes. Richard was a little late.
The surgeon said.
Yeah, really.
Okay, item number nine is consideration of an ordinance regarding regulating e-cigarettes and vaporizers, and I am very unfamiliar with this one, so Scott, take it away.
Yeah, what this ordinance does is it amends the Avalon Municipal Code to add e-cigarettes as, in terms of definition of cigarette, cigarettes, which basically means that e-cigarettes, well, smoking of e-cigarettes, you have to not be within a certain number of feet of a public area. It treats e-cigarettes like cigarettes for purposes of public safety in the city. We've attached the report from the state that goes over the hazards of e-cigarettes, and so many cities are doing this, we're asking that you do this as well.
And the vaporizer, the vaporizers too.
Right. E-cigarettes and vaporizers.
And the league's, community services committee is very concerned with this, because the tobacco companies are fighting this sort of regulation, because they don't want their distribution to be distributed, be limited to minors and such, and this would limit, limit the distribution, distribution to anybody under the age of 18.
And the e-cigarettes and the vaporizer are tobacco-related products?
E-cigarettes are tobacco or nicotine delivery devices, vaporizers are not, but they're a stepping stone in the eyes of little league.
I guess I can't use one of those tricks. Alrighty, do we have comments on that? Anybody from the audience? Think that this is a good way to go?
Okay, I will make a motion to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the city of Avalon, California, amending Chapter 11, Title VI, of Title VI of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding the definition of smoking, smoke or smoking.
Second.
Been moved in seconded, call for the vote?
Four ayes, one no, Councilmember Sampson.
And item 10, are we going to remove, was that the one you were talking about removing, Denise?
Yes, item 10 is being removed from the agenda.
Okay, item 10 being removed.
You will come back.
Okay. Okay, so we'll adjourn that meeting, and we will go in, we will open up the meeting of the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees.
Thank you so kindly. Row call, ma'am?
Thank you. I knew I screwed that up.
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
You okay, Richard? Trustee Sampson?
Here.
Trustee Marshall?
Here.
And Chairman Olson?
Here.
Announcements? No announcements? None? Okay, written communication? None? Presentations? None? Oral communication? This is a time the public can accept comments from the public, no action will be taken on, on agenda items at this meeting, speakers should limit their discussion to three minutes. Oh, someone's flocking to the stand.
Somebody blocked the stand. He said, "Good evening, Mr. Chairman, trustees, city council, city staff and council. My name is Brian Ballard, I'm interim CEO at Catalina Island Medical Center. I reside at 318 Clarissa Avenue." So some of the information I'd like to share with you this evening is that one of the services at the hospital that frequently occurs to the community's mind is that of the emergency service. And of course, with physicians and nursing personnel on hand, certainly staff 24/7, there are also radiology staff members, as well as clinical laboratory staff members, that are there during the daytime hours and on weekends, as well as being on call. Recently, the hospital, a couple of years ago, added a state-of-the-art CT scanner, which is of great assistance to members of the medical staff in being able to do a diagnosis, but one of the major benefits that accrues to members of the community is if in the middle of the night, 2:00 in the morning, there is a question as to whether there is a bleed in the brain, a subdural hematoma, or perhaps an abdominal bleed, frequently, the physician then, with the use of the CT, is able to make a determination as to whether that patient needs to go over town for further intervention, or perhaps can be cared for here in our own community without the expense of the helicopter ride. There was another service that was augmented in the last couple of years with respect to the development of a relationship with Dr. Rex Winters, who is a cardiologist and is the director of interventional radiology, or cardiology services at Long Beach Memorial Hospital. The augmentation then that Dr. Winters brings to the hospital is that, again, in the middle of the night, if a patient presents to the emergency department, and there is a question as to whether the cardiac event that is occurring needs to immediately go over to town to receive services there, or perhaps can wait until the following day, Dr. Winters then is available to work with the medical staff to make a determination as to, yes, we need to put them on the helicopter and get them over ASAP, or no, it actually is a condition, then can wait until the following morning, and the patient can go over on the boat. And again, one of the determinants here, not in terms of the physician's judgment, but one of the values to the patient is that if they can avoid that helicopter cost, then certainly that's a benefit to the community, and we think that these things indeed have been a benefit to the community. However, occasionally, roughly 10 cases a month do need to be medevac off the island to a tertiary facility for further services. About six years ago, Chuck Martin introduced to the community a program called MASA. It's an insurance program that has its roots in the Caribbean. It has the distinction of making services available, its insurance program, to anyone who participates in that plan, essentially on a worldwide basis. They will do medical evacuations. And typically, the plans for MASA run for a single individual. It's currently about $540 a year, and for a family, around $720 a year. If you want more information on what MASA can offer you or your family members, then they do have a, a website, it's called MASAassist.com, so M-A-S-A-A-S-S-I-S-T.com. About the same time then that MASA was being rolled out to the hospital, we began working with Mercy Air, which is the principal air carrier for medical evacuations on the island. And the discussion that took place with Mercy was, can you develop a club, or essentially an insurance program for residents of the island, since we don't have a choice as to whether we get off the island by ground ambulance, or which ground ambulance it may be? since we don't have a choice as to whether we get off the island by ground ambulance or which ground ambulance it may be? And they came back then with a program that works like a club membership or an insurance program. And their program is called, it's done in conjunction with the Chubb Insurance Agency, it's called Life Shield Alliance. And for a single individual on an annual basis, that is forty-nine ninety-five a year, and for a family, it's fifty-nine ninety-five a year. One of the differences with the Life Shield Alliance program is it works in the United States, it works with other helicopter service, so it's not restrictive to Mercy Air itself, but it does not work out of country. So those of our community who travel extensively, if they want that, you know, belt and suspenders with the travel insurance plus a program such as what MASA has to offer, then for those foreign travelers, then indeed, MASA might be the better option. Mercy's website that's within their program is called lifeshieldalliance.com, and all of that is common spelling, where you can find further information. I should say that anytime there's a patient that's transported off the island by air ambulance, the hospital certainly works with the referring physician to see that the patient gets transferred, but it doesn't impact the local community in terms of the hospital bill whatsoever. So any aspect of the hospital bill is absolutely independent of anything associated with the air transportation of patients off the island then. Recently, was talking with one of you as trustee, you're a council member that was at the hospital, and in the hallway, we met one of our residents. So gee, some people didn't know that we actually have a residency program with the hospital. This program goes back about twenty years ago. It's in conjunction with Downey Regional Medical Center. And each year, starting about April until about October, we have a family practice resident who is a third-year resident, so they're a licensed physician, that comes to the hospital. They're with us from noon on Wednesday until Sunday morning at oh eight hundred. And during that time that they're here, during the daytime, you may see them in the medical group office where they're providing clinic service visits, but then in the evening, they're on first call for the emergency department. So they're on first call. They're the first ones that the nursing staff will contact. If that individual needs any assistance or consultation, then we have one of our regular three physicians that's also on call, that's second call, that provides backup service to that resident. So it's been impressive over the years that I've been associated with the hospital to see the caliber of individuals that come to our island that provide the service to our patients. I think it's a very rich program for those who are in a training program in a very metropolitan area to be able to come to a more rural area. Some of them, after rotating through, actually have made decisions to go into family practice rural health. And so if you see somebody in a white coat that, gee, I don't think I've seen them before, in all likelihood, that's who it is. It's one of the residents of the hospital. Let's see, the next item I wanted to describe to you is that for the hospital's regular board meeting that's on Tuesday of next week, I'm going to be presenting three proposals of executive search firms for a CEO search program. So I think that we've been able to get three very strong candidates that the AMDC board will be evaluating. Once they make a decision, then that entity, that firm, will assign key staff members then that will interview the board. They may very well interview members of the community, certainly members of the medical staff and the medical management staff, then to be able to develop a spec sheet as far as going out and conducting the search to be able to find the CEO. That process typically takes about six months. I think the hospital has been fortunate in having longevity of CEOs for some time. I know going back to Bill Green, he was with the hospital for ten years. I was with the hospital a little over six years. The average today is around three years. I think it behooves us, if we can, to be able to get somebody to stay longer, just so there's continuity of information and programs being able to move forward. But that is going to be presented to the AMDC board next week. And then I was hoping to be able to also present two proposals for conducting a community needs assessment. This is where a specialist is engaged for, it generally takes a couple of months, but to be able to survey the community with mail ballots and then to conduct focus groups to get a clear understanding from the community, what are the priorities as we, the community, see them? Are there some services that we should be offering that we're not? Are there some services that should be expanded beyond where they are now? I think that the importance of this study is such that it's the beginning step for starting to look at the replacement or major modifications to the existing facility we have. We know that the existing facility does not meet the seismic standards, and something material has to be done with it by the year 2030. So this will be a first step in starting to move down the path to be able to get things in place for that activity. Let's see, the last item, last item I want to discuss with you is you've received a letter from the hospital that's dated June ninth in which the AMDC board is recommending to you as trustees and council the appointment of Trudy Saldana, Judy Greer, and Paul De Meyer to serve in capacities of board positions that are, some of them are currently vacant and others will be coming up the first of July in the new fiscal year. Late this afternoon, I did receive a letter from Mr. De Meyer that I would like to read to you as trustees, and it says, "Dear Mrs. Vega and Ballard, after much consideration, I have decided to withdraw my candidacy for an extension of my term on the board of the Avalon Medical Development Corporation and will simply let my current tenure expire at the end of this fiscal year on June thirty, two thousand and fifteen. I appreciate having had the opportunity to serve on the hospital board for the past seven years and greatly value the friendships and the collective progress we have made at the Catalina Island Medical Center. Continues to serve both the residents and visitors to our community. Thank you very much and best wishes for the future. Very truly yours, J. Paul De Meyer." And I know members of the board express their gratitude for Mr. De Meyer for the services provided to our community for these seven years and certainly wish him the best of luck in his future endeavors. Having said that then, the request is that you do have a letter before you tonight representing three individuals to fill the positions. The request then is that you defer action on Mr. De Meyer's recommendation, but take action on the other two positions that are recommended to you. On Tuesday of next week at five o'clock, the AMDC board will be in session, and one of the items on their agenda is to deal with vacancies for the hospital board. You as trustees, as council members, certainly are invited to that. Your input would be welcome as the hospital board looks at how it is that it fills these positions going forward. And so I will leave that information with you. And if there are any questions on any of the information I provided, I would be pleased to provide that to you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any questions?
That was all in oral communications.
Yeah.
That was...
That's okay.
That's okay.
Thank you, sir.
I do have questions, but I'm gonna wait until we get to that agenda item.
Okay.
Okay.
So finish oral, any other oral communication from the audience? People are just flocking up there. Consent calendar.
We have two items on the consent calendar this evening. One is the May nineteen, two thousand and fifteen Hospital Board of Trustees actions. The second item is the CEO's board report from the May thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting, and the CFO's financial statement for April of two thousand and fifteen.
And I will be abstaining from item number one because I was not here in attendance on May nineteenth. Discussion? Anything from the public? Motion?
To approve items one and two.
Cool. Second?
Hush, second.
Further discussion? Call for the question.
All eyes, and one abstention on item one from Councilmember Olson.
Thank you. General business. Item three.
Item three is appointment of additional directors to the Avalon Medical Development Corporation board. The bylaws of the corporation allow for up to eleven board members, and as you recall, last meeting, you appointed two additional ones, which was Michael Ponce and Katrina Awalt. And since that meeting, we have received an additional... Four applications? I've lost my place in line. Sorry. Four more, sorry, yes, we did. We received four more applications. They were from Carla Parsons, Steve, I don't know how to pronounce that gentleman's last name, Rodney Muller, and Rich Haynes.
Thank you. The pleasure?
Well, I just have a couple of quick questions for Mr. Ballard, if you don't mind.
Explain me. Mr. Ballard? You're being quizzed. Quizzed.
No, not quiz.
Oh, you're being questioned.
Is Dr. Muller, was he, he's just stepped down from the board, is that correct, or did I...
Yes, he just, he was in a term, as I recall, that ran into June thirtieth of this year. And my recall is Dr. Muller resigned from the board in April of this year.
And now he's submitting an application to go back on the board?
As well as...
That's my understanding. I have a copy of that application as well. That submittal occurred after the AMDC board met for the month of May. I believe that those applications, two of them came in on Friday of last week, and the hospital board had met prior to that time.
Okay.
I just have a little statement, Miss Cindy. I would like to read the statement. I think you're...
Oh, I love it!
I think you're rubbing off on me a bit. Not enough, but it's just easier to read this, to be clear. We've been provided a new slate of members to the AMDC board. We've also been provided with other applicants of which we may consider. And I believe a nine-member board consisting of experienced members, as well as a mix of new enthusiastic and caring members, will move the AMDs forward as they tackle many issues, most importantly, the future of our hospital to be completed and the hiring of a new administrator. I also believe a clinician from the hospital would be valuable, providing insight to the board on the day-to-day hospital and clinic operations and the interpretation and implementation of state and our federal mandates. And as you know, we did have an application for a brief time from Dr. Mellon, and he rescinded that. And I know that Dr. Yulabar is going to be having surgery, so she's not able to participate. And then you have Dr. Norton, who hadn't put in her application. So in light of Mr. De Meyer's retraction of his application, first of all, the members leading us into fifteen sixteen are Conrado Vega, Michael Ponce, Lisa Moss, B. Van Everie, and Katrina Awalt. That's five people. So I would like to propose the following slate for your consideration, since we do know it's hard to find experienced people that want to participate in something of this nature. It's probably one of those not-so-thankful jobs. So I would also like to consider Rich Haynes back on the board, Rod Muller, and Dr. Carla Parsons. And then, in getting to that nine-member board, it would leave Judy Greer and Trudy Saldana to be considered for the board. I think it's time to move forward, to get going, and if these are all the applications we have in trying to fill other vacancies, I don't know who would be coming up, coming up. Definitely, you can speak to this, Mr. Ballard, if you would like.
Okay, so I believe Mr. Ballard said that the board was gonna consider the new application next Tuesday? Because they haven't had a chance to consider those yet? So are you taking the board out of the discussion?
Well, not really. I mean, we know we've had two great, in Mr. Haynes and in Mr. Muller, we had two great people on the board. And I think their wanting to come back is, speaks a lot, because they're wanting to move forward. I'm also thinking that as you, as you get new people on the board, to train them all at once is probably easier than doing it then and then doing it again. Again, I'm trying not, I guess I'm trying to tell you how to do your job. I feel bad about that. But I would like to see the board get filled and then to move forward as soon as possible, so.
I just, there was a request from the board to let them consider the application for the next meeting, next Tuesday. We're having a meeting Tuesday, next week and Friday. So we could, I would like to appoint the two that the board's already come forth with, let the board review the other ones, and let them make the recommendation off of that.
You mean Rod Muller and...
No, Trudy and Judy.
Trudy and Judy. The ones we have now? Yeah.
Yeah, the other two. I just want to ask a couple clarifying questions because, as you know, at the last meeting, I was trying to figure out at what level is our responsibility. I feel more comfortable interviewing everybody myself, but that's, we're attempting to take the direction from the board themselves and also from the hospital. So I guess we had previous discussion about having a participant that works at the hospital as a member of the board. Is there a difference between the doctors per se and the staff, first of all? And I guess where I'm going with that is, would there be any reason to preclude a member of the staff from participating in the board, on the board? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that having a member of the medical staff on the board is an asset. Truthfully, in my forty-five-year career, I have never been at a hospital where there was not a member of the medical staff. But I think one thing that the community needs to remember, it's only been in the last few years, that there have been permanent physicians on the medical staff. When I came in two thousand and seven, job one was to get physicians, so there weren't physicians. So it does take a while for those recruited to get their feet on the ground, to get into their practice, to get into the community and such as that. Having said that, having a physician, a medical physician, or an osteopathic physician on the board is a plus. And I think the history of what we've tried to do with Dr. Mellon, I think it was accurately described. Hope springs eternal, and I would hope that at some point in the future that Dr. Mellon might consider that. So I know there's been some discussion about having other doctors on the hospital board, but those other doctors are in specialties other than medicine. And that doesn't mean that those people aren't successful individuals or smart individuals or perhaps have something to contribute. But the specific emphasis on having a doctor of medicine on the board is that there is an enhancement to some of the discussions that talk about privileges for staff to have and things of that nature. With respect to having an employee on the board, there's a lot of history in our community where employees on boards hasn't always worked out. And it, you know, I guess I would start with saying that at each board meeting then, the board has some employees there. It has the chief executive officer, who's an employee of the organization. It has the chief financial officer, who's an employee of the organization. It has the chief of patient care services, who's the head nurse, and over other clinical services. And then there's always other staff that are present just as a part of the administrative function of the board. One of the challenges that an individual who is an employee frequently runs into in serving on a hospital board is that immediately, there's an expectation on the part of co-employees that that employee is now going to represent us as employees, if you will. And that can be a tremendous pressure on the individual as far as carrying out that responsibility. And maybe things go just fine as long as everybody... And maybe things go just fine as long as everybody is approving the action that is being proposed. But there absolutely are occasions where the good of the community and its health, or the health of the institution, may be different than what a particular segment of the hospital staff might be experiencing. And sometimes tough decisions have to be made for the good of the community. And that also then puts an extra pressure on a hospital employee board member. Sometimes the tension gets such that you end up losing that employee, because they come back, and then the chatter in the hallway is, "Well, why didn't you support me? Me as your benchmate, or your beside, the bedside table with you," or such as that, in terms of what is that the issue with the board was. So, this is not to say that there may be some hospitals that indeed do have employees on the board. Typically, those are larger organizations where some of the actions are not quite as visible or as vulnerable, if you will, in terms of the exposure. So, I would offer those comments to you then in response to your question.
All right, thank you.
It's, it's a good way to ruin a good employee, sometimes.
I, I will note that the bylaws were amended two and a half years ago to allow for doctors or staff to be on the board. So it's legally permissible for that to happen. The, the standard that you have, which is set forth in the bylaws, which is the one standard that governs who is appointed, is that directors shall be persons who are concerned with the quality of the facility and the services it provides. So that is the guiding light by which you have to make your appointments. Traditionally, it's been upon the advice of, of medical board to you as, as trustees, governed by that, that principle. So, from a legal point of view, it's, shall be persons who are concerned with the quality of the facility and the services it provides. After that, it's up to your discretion, taking into consideration the advice of the board.
We got Michael out of bed. Or out of somewhere.
Historically, we have allowed the hospital board to recruit and bring people to the board, in that these are people they're going to have to work with. To me, it seems like you're making something political. Had two, these two gentlemen, Annie, if they had wanted to be on the board, they should never have resigned. If they thought they were going to be making a difference, they should not have resigned. They should have stayed and fought their battle, but they didn't. They left. And now you have people who are willing to step up, and I think you need to listen to what the board is saying. Because we sat down, we discussed everybody, and sent our recommendation, and that's been, historically, what the hospital board has done.
Okay.
Sorry.
I appreciate your...
With that said, I need to ask, how did we get into this position to begin with? Having six people resign, including the administrator?
What?
Four people resign?
And a five.
Including the, so that's five altogether.
Right.
Can you, can you explain that to me?
No, because I was not on the board at that time. But a decision was made, and we have to live with that decision, be it right, wrong. Had, had the board, if, I don't want to get into the politics of it, because I wasn't there, but bottom line to me personally is, if I had a grievance, if there was something there that I was going to fight for, I would have stayed on that board and fought for it. And it seems like a lot of people jumped ship because they didn't like the decision that was made. And you don't get in public service to jump ship. You're there to do a job, so.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you for your comment.
I was going to say, and Scott kind of jumped in before, but after my first question was, I spent a significant amount of time on this today, and one of the comments that resonated very loudly to me in my conversations with many different people today was, the, the board, the medical board, has gone through and vetted a number of applications, and as a team, they have made their recommendations to us. And I really don't feel it's fair to take the judgment away from this group of people who have said, "We, we would request that you allow us to have these people on our board who are also willing to serve." With the new applications that have just come in, I feel very uncomfortable making a random appointment when, first of all, I've never talked to them about their request, and, and I, if I'm trusting the medical center board to say, "This is what we want, and these people want to serve, let us, let us have this," and without any glaring errors to that, I, I don't feel comfortable making appointments outside of what they've already vetted as a board. So, I'm, I guess only may have said it, I would be more than happy to move forward with Trudy Saldana and Judy Greer, and then send the rest of the applications to the board for further recommendations. But I, I will say that also with the number of applications received in the last couple months, I would love to see you guys have a healthy board, a number of persons on your board. And if you have up to 11, that might be more than you need, but, you know, seven to nine seems reasonable to me. I would really like us to get to that number if we could, seven to nine.
Is that a motion?
Well, no, let everybody else have a conversation if they want to. I mean, I can make that into a motion, but if, I know Rich had some comments.
Yeah, and I could, and I could live with, with the recommendation until we hear back from the board who they have the recommendations of. I think that would be a good thing. But there's some good guys on here, and good people on here that, you know, if the board doesn't recommend them, what position are we in then? Can we go and still recommend these guys? If they come back and say that a couple of these people aren't on here, where do we go from there? Saying, next time they come back, there's a couple of people on here that they don't recommend, and obviously they have an interest to do it. How does it go from there?
Then you can appoint who you feel.
Then we can appoint who we feel, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Okay. I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that. Yeah, I've, I've had a lot of recommendations and information brought to me that it would be a good idea to have people with medical experience, such as nurses, doctors, caregivers, people that understand the business and the hospital itself on the board, because they understand what it takes to run a hospital. So with, Beetle's comment was, I, I, I think we're pretty complete in what we're understanding.
And I have to, I have to make an objection about that, Joe. You're, the board that has been running the hospital since we passed the sales tax have not been doctors, have not been medical people, but we've done a real, they have done a really good job. We did a really good job getting it out of, almost closing its doors to where it is now. And it's a group of people in this community that all they thought about, bottom line, was keeping those doors open and keeping good medical services here on the island. So I, I take offense to that comment of, they should be doctors, nurses, medical staff.